Real fast.
Christmas.
Oh, you're on, Mayor.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join Councilman Bathroyd with a salute to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would you please join me in our prayer, oh Lord, as we enter into a new year and a new decade, give us strength, give us wisdom, give us vision to do what is best for our community. And, and please, give us the strength to listen attentively and participate in these deliberations. In your, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, I open our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of January 7th. First item that we have, or second item on the agenda, is public recognitions. And I do have a proclamation that I'd like to read. And I'll come down there. And if the members of the American Legion would like to join me up here, that would be great, too. Any place around here would be great. Come on right in here, right in here. Okay, I have a American Legion and auxiliary proclamation for the American Legion Auxiliary Centennial Day. Whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 as a wartime veterans' organization based on four pillars: care for veterans, national security, Americanism, and children and youth. And whereas the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary was also formed in 1919 to support, support the American Legion and honor the sacrifices of those who served by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military, and their families, both at home and abroad. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary is celebrating its centennial in 2019-2020 year, now therefore I, Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim January 7th, 2020, as the American Legion Auxiliary Centennial Day. And we have some members of the Auxiliary, the President, you've got, you only have five minutes, but you want to talk a little bit about what the Auxiliary does. Congratulations on your, your 100 years, and I don't know how many years the Auxiliary has been here, but you've done a great, great job. You might want to tell the public a little bit about all the things you do. Oh, can I be in here, too? Do you want the proclamation? Okay, let's move over here. Okay, there we go. Can I do everything for Mike?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We appreciate you allowing us to serve our community. In the last two weeks, three weeks, we've distributed 36 brand-new winter coats to two of our elementary schools for needy children. We've taken 30 large Christmas gift bags to nursing homes for any veteran that's in the nursing home. The American Legion Auxiliary was the largest patriotic organization in the world for women. It was formed to help the veterans and support the American Legion. But now it can't be called that anymore because it's not only for women. They're allowing the spouses of deployed soldiers, be it men or women, to be members. And we're very proud to be part of that great organization. Thank you.
Wait a minute, we're going to get one group picture here with our, we have our professional photographer.
Yeah, right.
Taking a picture here, just a minute. Yeah, okay. They're ready. Okay. Thank you, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Professional tar. Thanks.
Okay, the third item on the agenda is our consent agenda. This is only item A, which is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Authority meeting of December 17th.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, right.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present to approve the consent agenda. Item number four, discussion and possible action on the 2019 bomb refund, bond refunding option for OWRB loan 10-008. Staff comment?
Any of these options work. Option number one and option number two, the maturity date doesn't change. Option number one, what it does is you reduce your debt payments for the balance of the bond through 2032, a total of $42,000. If you do option two, the payments remain the same, but you get an upfront credit of $36,506. Of course, if we took the $36,506 and at a half percent interest on CDs, if you look at difference between $42,000 and $36,000, the, the interest you would earn annually at a half percent is only $182, so you're not really going to gain anything other than time value of money, of course. And that's why it's weighted to take that into account. Most cities, as our understanding, have been taking option one and reducing their, their debt payments. The only advantage I see to do an option two, rather than get the benefit over a 12-year period, if we get the $36,506 credit against our March payment, it will be easy to track that if we wanted to take that money and put it into the fund for the wastewater treatment plant, whereas otherwise, we'd have to track that difference over 12 years to put it in there. If we did it one time, it'd be easy to just put that in the fund, or trying to build that money for the wastewater treatment plant. And then option three, pay off the balance, well, that's, that's not practical at the present time.
And for those that, that don't understand, this, this little refund, if you will, was generated, how was it generated?
They did a refund of the bonds and got a better.
Got a better rate on the bonds, so, so all the cities, not, not just us, but anybody that financed through them, would review or receive relatively small, but still, a refund, smaller rate. Okay, I'll entertain.
Well, which way we're going to go with it?
Yeah.
Well, that's the question.
I'll entertain some discussion on.
I'd like to consider going with a reduction of the debt myself.
That's option number one.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think that's.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Don, your thoughts?
I think that's the right thing, that's what I had in my mind.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion then to move with option number one.
Motion to move with option number one, second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, right.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present to move with option number one, to reduce the debt. Item number five, basically same discussion.
Yes.
Just do them all the same.
So I make a motion, same on the next question.
Option number one, reduce the debt.
I'll second that.
Okay, and another second, submit your vote.
Mike, clarify, you're reducing the debt payment, not the debt.
The payment, right.
As the interest rate.
Yes. Submit your votes.
All votes, right.
Unanimous approval then to move with option number one to reduce the debt payment. And that being the last item on our agenda for the Public Works Authority meeting, we are adjourned, and I call to order our city council meeting of January 7th, 2020. Consent agenda items A and B, A is the approval of the minutes of a special city council workshop of December 17th, and B is the approval of the minutes of a city council meeting of December 17th.
So moved.
Motion, have a second, any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Item number three, presentation, discussion, possible action concerning the agreement between the City of Guthrie and Logan Community Services for temporary shelter for juveniles. Staff?
This is an agreement that the city has renewed for a number of years, and for some odd reason, I just asked city staff why we do it, and we'd been doing it so long, everybody kind of forgot why. And so I thought it would be a good thing for the community services to make a short presentation, just to remind us why we do the agreement each year. And the executive director, William Alexander, is here to make a short presentation, and he may have some staff or board members here with him as well.
Okay. Come on right up to the microphone, identify yourself and your address.
Check your, check your, check your driver's license.
I go there every day.
And now remember, you have five minutes.
I promise you I want to take five of yours. I'm William Alexander with Logan Community Service. Our board chairman, Bill Greer, is here, and two of our integral staff is here as well. I have been with this organization for about four years now, and contract was there when I got here. We have been providing counseling services for the citizens of Guthrie who do not have a payment source to receive services. We've on average seen client, about 75 clients a year. Usually, we provide about 10 to 15 hours of counseling for each of those. We've been doing that. If we were able to bill those clients at a Medicaid rate or Sinner Care, we would generate close to $15,000. But we feel, as part of the community, it's important for us to provide that service for people that do not have a revenue source to pay for counseling upon their need. At the same time, we also, on occasion, two maybe three times a year, the law enforcement will pick up children in the course of a traffic stop or a small, minor crimes that their parents might have committed, and we provide emergency shelter for those children. The police are able to bring them to our emergency shelter, get a clean bed to sleep in, a bath, get cleaned up, get fed. They're infants, our staff is trained, we have cribs, and all of our staff is certified to take care of children. We, last year, we did not have any children that came through law enforcement, but we have had numerous times that they said, we'll bring somebody, and they didn't actually do it, they found an alternative thing. So that gives the city the capacity to take care of kids. The cost, it's hard to calculate the cost for the police department to take care of a child, because you would need housing, cribs, training. So we give the city the capacity.
Nice.
Give the city the capacity to take care of its citizens or children that get pulled off the streets. All of our staff and counselors are certified or they're certified. Love to entertain any questions you have.
How, how many staff do you have, William?
We have five counselors, and our, and our shelter staff is approximately one or two full-time and about five or six part-time. My cost for my shelter, about $285,000 a year. We have to have at least one person on staff 24 hours a day to take care of the needs of the state VHS.
Law enforcement or other. The back end call.
We, like the cost, our cost for kids and counseling exceeds $1,500 a year, but we feel it's very important as part of the community to provide that service to the, to the city of Guthrie.
What's your funding source out there? Is it?
We, our funding source is a combination of Department of Health, Mental Health and Substance Abuse, Office of General Affairs. The United Way is graciously, we're an agency. People in the community and of course the state and different foundations make, have made contributions to our organization. About 10 to 15 percent of our funding costs are private credits and.
And you need volunteers?
All the time. Anytime somebody wants to come out, we have plenty of free, somebody could do 15 years.
Well, if you haven't seen where the facilities are on, on South Division, on the, on the east side, great facility, do a great, great service for our community juveniles, infants. You all do, you all do a superb job.
We're one of the few shelters in the state of Oklahoma that will take in that. Our staff is trained for that capacity.
Yeah, fabulous. Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion then to move to approve the $1,500 for.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, right.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to support that, that contract, continued contract with the Logan County Community, Logan Community Services. Item number four, discussion, possible action to approve the purchase of two ambulances for the sum of $452,338. And to authorize financing, a portion to be funded by the Logan County EMS District, which is the equivalent of $210,000. Staff?
I think we provided quite a bit of information. Again, thanks to Eric in the Fire Department for pursuing a grant from USDA to help pay for the purchase of these two ambulances. And the surplus funds from the EMS District that they provide to assist in the purchase, and then the rest of it, of course, will come out of the Fire Department Fund and the General Fund. So I think at this point, myself and the fire chief would be available to address questions, but I don't know that we need to bore you with a detailed presentation.
Okay, any questions of staff or of chief?
Motion approved, second.
Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, right.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to purchase the two ambulances and to authorize the financing of portion to be funded by the Logan County EMS District.
Now, we already did the stretcher, right, Eric?
Right, we did those last time, strikers. Okay, item number five, discussion, possible action to adopt ordinance number 3320, amending ordinance number 3075, section 3-1, which is sign, sign type, types in the historical preservation guidelines.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. You can remember back in November, this originally came to you after going to the Historic Preservation Commission, there was concerns on the limitation of the flags and also limitations on what the flags could say. So it went back to the Historic Preservation Commission in December, a third December meeting. The Historic Preservation Commission did agree that they didn't necessarily want to limit what a flag could say or banners could say. And so they had put a proposed recommendation forward. One of the things that the commission did not agree with and still would like to see prohibited, which is in one version of your ordinance, to have none or have no vertical flags or what's commonly known as feather flags. However, there was some council feedback that had suggested maybe that might be appropriate. So staff prepared two versions, so you would have all the information and basically opportunity to go ahead and adopt what you call is the most pertinent or most applicable version. And again, the only difference between the two is the HBC commit, or version would not allow any type of vertical banner, feather flags. The other version would, and there are spec, specifications in there that would limit the size, also would limit it to one per business, whether it be a horizontal or whether it be a vertical, if that were to be approved, it would still be limited to one. So with that, I'll lay it back to the council if you have any questions.
Now, are you talking about in downtown, or are you talking about the whole community?
No, this would just be within the Guthrie Historic District.
Just in the buildings downtown?
Yeah, the, yeah.
And we're talking.
The central business district.
And we're talking a pole-mounted sign that goes in the pole slot only, right?
Yes, it could be on the building, yeah, right.
Can't do that, we can't do that.
Right, the ordinance would allow it to be put on the building like some of the horizontal ones are, but yes, the ones that would be on the ground would be typically what you see out there now in the sidewalk, in an area where there's already.
And the feather flags are the one, the.
Yeah, or the more vertical ones.
They're the big, long ones that are, you know, grand opening.
Yeah, and like, a lot of times could flap, and exactly.
So the basic, the, the only difference is those ones, those long vertical ones that we're talking about are not in option one.
That's correct, which is the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation.
And we have, and we have three people that have asked to speak on, on this. Sherri?
Well, they actually are in option one, aren't they?
No.
No, they're in option two.
It would be an alternative option.
Okay, I see.
Identify yourself and your address, please.
Yes, sir. Cherie Gordon, 112 East Oklahoma. I have had a business here for 22 years, and I know from my own experience that open flags are really important to us as businesses. We all keep different hours, so when my customers come around the corner and see my flag out, they know I'm there for them to come buy something, which I need. My thing that I would like to say, and I appreciate the opportunity to do this, is that I believe because we have such a beautiful historic district, I would like to preserve it as much as possible in a historical manner. And I know open flags probably are not that. I did some research, I did with Savannah, Charleston, Fredericksburg, things that they permit. Some of them do not permit signage at all like that, but the ones that do are pretty strict in their designation, because they want to keep their district looking appropriate. So I am for the banners, that's really what I.
You're talking about the three by five?
Right, that just fly out. And I totally support that, I think it would make our city look great, it would have some uniformity, even though they might say a few different things, be different colors, it would be uniform when you look down the street. I don't really love the ribbon signs, I think they're way too modern for our district. So that's what I have to say, thank you.
What, what you're identifying as ribbon signs, Cherie, is the same as the feather flags you're talking about?
Feather flags we're talking about.
Okay, all right, thank you. Gary Good? Name and address?
Gary Good, 301 West Oklahoma Avenue. And like Cherie, Cherie, I've had business in downtown Guthrie for 12 years now, and it's very important for us as well to be able to have an open sign up front, just to make sure people, as they're wandering the streets, can, can actually see places that are open. But I totally agree that the feather flags really kind of cheapen the look of a historic district, and so I would just like to, to put my opinion in that I would prefer not to have those downtown. Linda Rice from Heritage Collection was going to be here tonight and asked to relate the same sentiments for her, she prefers also not to have the.
She actually called me.
Okay, that's all, just wanted to voice my opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chapel?
Yeah, I.
What's your address? Name and address?
519 North Park Street, Guthrie, Oklahoma.
And which chapel are you?
Former, former chairman of the HP.
Former.
I, I got demoted last night, but I'm, I'm still on HP.
How does that work?
Well, I, I asked to be.
Okay, let's. All right, let's move on.
One, one thing, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but with the height requirements of the existing ones that I see in town, of those feather flags, there's only one that would still be able to fly with the eight-feet requirement, and that's Councilman Long's. The medical one, and the vape one, and then there's a lone one, they're over, like 10 feet tall or taller, and they can go up to 20 feet, so. And then I had a, Carol McPeek wanted to be here tonight, and she just sent me this note, and I'll just share it with you as her representative. She's a longtime owner of a business downtown and building. Why are feather flags, and she's pretty blunt, and she's writing to me, so. Why are feather flags being considered for the historic district of Guthrie? They're an eyesore and do not belong in a historic district. Why is this even an issue? Please do not let this happen. Why are we backsliding? So I just thought I'd share that point with her.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think they are appropriate on the fringe out there, not in downtown. I don't think downtown. I'm talking about out on the fringe.
South Division.
South Division and west, you know, west and West Noble, that type stuff, and, you know. Galleria had issue because they're way in the back, and they, the only way people know they're even there is by a, a big banner flag out front.
But this ordinance really doesn't reflect this dark district. So is there a, is there a height, speaking to the issue, of height that was brought up? Is there a height restriction?
Yeah, it's currently eight feet as it's proposed. But again, if the council would desire to raise that, I mean, staff obviously has no issue with that, because height is much like size and everything, it's a local flavor of what you would want. I kind of looked at some of the research, and eight feet seemed to be kind of a average type thing, but if it's going to preclude some of the existing even horizontal flags, then even staff would say we probably should raise that a couple feet, or what would feel to be appropriate to make sure we don't exclude some of the current flags that are out there.
Shouldn't you have a standard height, if you're going to have a standard?
Yeah, we would, yeah, we'd need to pick whatever height, you know, if you want to raise it to 10 feet or 12 feet, or whatever the case may be.
That's, people right now, their open flags right now are how big?
I didn't think they were more than eight feet. I mean, the size, the actual size that we have in the code is pretty much what they are, a 36 by 60 type flag in that, and most of them didn't seem to be on a pole that exceeded maybe five, six feet in that. I may be wrong, because I didn't look that closely, to be honest with you, in that. I know some of the actual feather flags, those may be higher than eight feet, there could be some 10, 11 feet ones in there.
I guess what I'm saying is I wouldn't want to have to burden people with having to buy a new flag.
Right, right.
Well, we're just talking about a maximum, though.
Are we talking maximum, or are we talking standard?
No, that would be the maximum, if they wanted smaller, they can have smaller, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Because this is just putting forth maximums that it cannot exceed.
This doesn't affect the American flag on Flag Day, does it?
No, it does not, we, that is something we don't regulate in the zoning code, that's completely different, yeah.
So it's out of my wheelhouse on the height, what do you, what's the recommendation for the height here?
Our, the staff's recommendation was eight feet. And again, we're talking, you know, if, even if you stick your horizontal flag in the, in the ground, it could be on basically an eight-foot pole.
And you're recommending option one?
That's what the Historic Preservation Commission had recommended.
That's what I mean.
Well, that's a reasonable recommendation, I think.
We were just providing a second option in the event that the council would like to go a direction different than what the Historic Preservation Commission had. From staff, all we really care about is there are some regulations in place to regulate, it is a local thing as far as what you want, size, location, all of that, it varies everywhere. As Cherie said, some are very more restrictive, some are a little bit more liberal on it, there's no set standard, per se.
But an eight-foot, three by five helps keep it uniform. And I, I think that's the key to it, you know, is uniform, obviously, we're going to have a marijuana flag down here by the post officer, but they're still all same size and uniform when you look down that street. So I think, I think it's a good option you came up with, it's not near as invasive as dictating colors and words and all of that kind of stuff. They've still got the freedom of speech, if they want one with their company logo or whatever, they can do that. I think it's a good option.
I'm going to make an option to approve it.
I'll second it.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, we're.
Option one, HP's recommendation.
Without the feather flag.
Make sure, so it's on record.
HP's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on, to approve option number one, which was the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation to ordinance 3075. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to move with option number one as presented by staff and the Historic Preservation Commission.
Joe, tell her you didn't let it happen.
Text her, text her back, it didn't happen.
Item number six, a discussion, possible action to adopt ordinance number 3326 to rezone a property located at 2121 West Noble Avenue. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is, as indicated, a rezone from R1 to C2. The property's at 2121 West Noble, it's, many of you may be familiar with, it was formerly a dental office, it was built as a. It was built as a dental office. It's been, I think, vacant for a little while. The current owner had purchased it. When they came in asking some questions about it, that's when we realized that actually the property's still technically zoned R-one and that. But it's been used as a commercial property since the building was built.
That's one up past the hill on the right.
Yes.
That's the hill out there.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is basically just kind of cleaning things up to make the use in the zoning in compliance.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
No, south side. I'm sorry.
South side.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that rezoning. Is there any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote Trent.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to rezone that property at twenty-one-twenty-one West Noble to C-two. Item number seven. Discussion, possible, potential follow-up action on resolution two-zero-one-nine-dash-eleven. Determine, concerning structures at one-seventeen and one-twenty-one East Oklahoma. Staff?
Staff has had communications with the new owner of the property. Colley Stevens is the gentleman's name. He's indicated that he's trying to work to find someone to remove the bricks in a manner where they could be repurposed. And with the holidays and things, he's had some difficulty getting that lined up. But he has proposed, or requested the city council give him to March twenty-twenty to repurpose the bricks on site and to finish cleaning up the lots. It's a long one. But if the city council agrees with that motion, it should state something like, "Move pursuant to resolution number two-thousand-nineteen-dash-eleven, that the city council hereby amends the deadline set forth in section two-B of resolution March, till March first, twenty-twenty, for the owner to dismantle the balance of the remaining structures, inclusive slabs, foundations and any other improvements on the property. Fill the basement areas with compacted material. Clear the sites of all debris. Level the two lots and plug and secure all sewer service lines at a depth of not less than twenty-four inches from the ground surface." And what that does is it, it continues the requirements from the resolution into this motion, given the extension. And then also further, the city manager and/or agents of the municipality are granted the right of entry on the property for the performance of the necessary duties as a governmental function of the municipality if the work is not performed by the property owner within the amended deadline of March first, twenty-twenty. Or the city may pursue other remedies inclusive of, but not limited to prosecution on complaint before the municipal court, prosecution on information or indictment before another appropriate court and/or civil action. And that just gives, restates our authority in case it's not done by March first. We can go on the property and address it.
And of course, these are the two buildings owned by, previously owned by Byron Berlin. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any discussion then about this request from the new owners of the property?
Well, I think, you know, we leaned on the previous owner. We leaned on Berlin pretty good, because we wanted it addressed. And it's up again, because we wanted it addressed. I don't think, you know, the guy, since somebody else bought it now, he knew it was under a cleanup order when he bought it. And I realize he ran up against the holidays, too. It's hard to get, hard to be productive during the holidays. But my point is, I want to be sure we're, you know, the same for everybody.
Equitable.
Yeah. I don't want to, you know, draw the line with the previous owner and make a big deal with him and then let the next guy come in and go, "Oh, you bought it? Well, we're just going to let you do what you want." So that's, that's my main thing with wanting it on, you know, wanting us to establish something. And if this is roughly the middle of January, will be. If we made it the middle of February, that's cutting him off by two weeks. What he asked for, he asked for the first of March.
Did he ask for the first of March or the end of March?
What I read said he asked until the first of March. And if we said till the middle of February, that would be treating him the same way we treated the previous owner.
And to give us a chance to review what he's done.
Well, and I'm, I'm pretty sure if it comes February fourteenth and he's down there, they're working on it and digging them out. Or if it's happening, and it was the same way with the previous owner, we're not going to go down there and start, you know, hauling him off to jail the minute that happens. But if it's still sitting down there on the fourteenth, on the fifteenth, we need to be writing a ticket for it.
I agree with that.
I, I think if he set him a deadline himself as March first, that, you know, why quibble over a couple of weeks?
Other than trying to be fair with the-
Just a minute, just a minute.
Oh, okay. I thought you were done.
No. Because I think, I think we have more enforceability with saying, "Hey, you've set your own deadline. We're, we're, we're giving you the benefit of the doubt. We understand, you know, that there were a lot of circumstances involved here." I don't know. I know, two weeks, to me, just doesn't mean, doesn't seem to be-
So the deadline is only to clean the brick out? Is that what we're talking about here?
No, it would be dismantle the balance of the remaining structure, including slabs, foundations, any other improvements. Fill the basement areas with compacted material. Clear the site of all debris. Level two lots. Plug and secure all service lines at the depth of not less than twenty-four inches from ground surface.
Well, see, that makes a difference to me, because I was-
Well, that's true, too. Yeah, I was, I had cleaning the mess in my mind.
You've got quite a bit to do.
If he's going to do all that, the-
I make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, for him to accomplish all these things with a March first deadline. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. Submit your votes.
I'll vote Trent.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to amend resolution number two-zero-one-nine-dash-eleven to extend the deadline to March first and accomplish all the, all the work that had been identified by the city manager.
Which comes from the previous, the resolutions?
Comes from the original resolution. Okay? Very good. And item number eight, city manager report.
No report tonight.
Item number nine is city council report. Councilman Case, Vice Mayor Case.
We've had a really good two thousand nineteen. Let's hope two thousand twenty turns out the best,